All right, guys. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Village of Cary for Tuesday, April 19th, 2016, to order with roll call.
Chapman?
Here.
Kostler?
Here.
Cavelli?
Here.
Dudek?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
McAlpine?
Here.
Thank you. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now move to the public comment section where the public is invited to address the board on any issue that is not really on the agenda or something else they want to talk about. Does anybody out there sign in? Nope. Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and close public comment. Now moving to a consideration of the March 15th, 2016 revised Village Board meeting minutes. And there are, in front of you, there's more revisions on page 2 of 7. One of the things that I'd like to address on the minutes right now, I think we're kind of getting off the beaten pack of what, beaten path of what they're meant to be. It's supposed to be a quick synopsis of what was discussed, getting into all of the dirty details of different things that would require, I think, a court reporter is what we're kind of doing here right now. And that's not, when we made the decision when we went to videotaping the meetings that we were going to make this simplified and just an overview of that, because if that's the case, we keep adding these things here too. Moving forward on the last board meetings, there are some comments that were made between a trustee and a resident that weren't included in this too. I would prefer to keep them at a high level if people are that concerned about what was actually said. They can go to our webpage, pull up our board meeting, and watch the meeting. Here verbatim.
I was just going to ask if a resident wanted to listen to the tape, but I guess they could watch the whole thing.
Yeah, no, they could, they can actually ask for a copy of the tape as well, too. But we try to make it as quick as, you know, going back and forth with these little corrections, it kind of gets us on a path. I like to move forward around these things and just get on with the regular business. I don't know if anybody has any comments about that.
I think I do, because I still see some discrepancies between certain minutes and then certain other minutes. I mean, some tend to be very detailed, or at least a lot more detailed than other minutes. And then there are other minutes that are just very, boom, 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 boom. That was it. Then we're done with it. So I think there needs to be then some consistency in terms of who's doing the minutes, how they're going to do them. Maybe we need one person do the minutes every time, so it's not some kind of a difference, you know? But I agree. I'm glad it is videotaped and that people are able to see us and they can look up and see exactly what we're talking about and see that there are differences and opinions on this board that are out there. But, you know, I guess it's just, comes down to, you know, the nuts and bolts about what do we want our minutes to look like. This was something that did stick out to me, though, that I thought needed to be changed, because when I saw it, I had it tagged in my packet for the village board, that I thought that was a mistake. So, I'm not sure, but that's how I feel. It's clear.
Yeah, I asked for the latest revision to be added because the minutes that were in here were not accurate. It said that I had asked that the statements that Mr. Ternier resigned from, and I didn't say that. So that's why I asked for the newest addition, which was actually the previous minutes, so.
It might be easiest to prove what's in front of you unless there's amendments to what's on tonight. And then moving forward, from a standpoint of consistency, we do our best to represent what gets said. We haven't had the path of full, you know, detail of what every speaker says. I think that's the point we're standing on as to whether that should be changed. We do try to make sure that what gets said in the minutes represents fact and what is physically said as best we can. But if there's amendments, we take that under advisement and make changes as appropriate. There aren't no new people doing the minutes. I mean, the minutes are being done the same way that we've been doing them the last couple of years. So we're just trying to react and adapt to what your, possibly your new direction might be. But you're correct, that when the videotaping went on, we were able to thin down what we had. And it's added substantial number of hours back to staff time to do other projects.
I would just kind of tag along with that, that I do think it's important that we're consistent. I don't want to be in a position where we're singling out, and I'm not, please don't think I'm picking on anybody here. I just don't want the minute to be detailed when it's negative against a particular trustee or the mayor, because I think that's inappropriate. You don't pick and choose, hey, we're going to pick this one out because this make this person look bad. If we're going to be detailed, then we're detailed. If we're going to be an overview, then we do an overview. So again, I reiterate that I think we need to be consistent is all.
And that's the point I was trying to make, too. Is there only one person that makes the minutes? Is that Julie?
Well, they're reviewed by Jacob and myself. So we get a draft, and we review them for content and just grammatics, those kind of things. And it's been working fine for quite a while. Obviously, when these things come up, it's just addressing, we had, in one instance, we had a speaker that asked for something to be put in the minutes, and that's part of this discussion. And then we had some discussion about what a trustee said, and we responded to that by making amendments and bringing them back. So we don't believe we have work order to do that always, unless it's been asked for some unique reason based on board direction.
Well, the reason why I asked it, I specifically said, I want to move past it. I don't want to keep bringing this issue up, but, you know, that was the only thing.
Right. But in the same respect, then do you think it's appropriate that we have comments that a resident made about trustee Kostler in the minutes?
Well, I mean, trustee Kostler was cut off, so he couldn't even rebut that. So to me, that is a little different. But certainly, if somebody wanted it added, that's their right. I would have to.
No, I'm not, it is their right. I'm asking, do you think it should be? I'm just asking, do you think it should be, that we should have reported that or not?
If it was said and somebody wants it in there, then let them have it added. But then I don't think we should be cutting off people to rebut that.
Sure.
We'll get to that, your comment there, when we get to the next set of minutes. So I need to, I need some consensus on these current, do the current minutes reflect what you want, trustee Cavelli? Okay. So the minutes as they're presented as amended, be on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I just have a point on that for clarification, and he can speak to it if he'd like to. I just wanted to wait to see if Jeff was going to say anything. On pages four of seven?
What date?
The 15th, the one we're on right now.
Yep.
I can't believe that what is printed under trustee Kraus's comment is what trustee Kraus meant, because he's basically suggesting that there are financial benefits of service businesses versus retail businesses. And I believe he probably meant the opposite.
Well, all I want to see is, what is the benefit of a service-oriented business versus a retail business when something comes before the board? Because service-oriented businesses don't necessarily bring any kind of a retail benefit to the village.
That's what I figured, but that's not what I read. Trustee Kraus stated that he prefers to consider the village financial benefits of service-oriented businesses versus retail. So I believe what you meant is exactly what you said, but that's not what I read. So, it's just a point. I wanted clarification that you really meant what you just said, which I.
So you're waiting to call me out, then?
If you change your mind, it's fine. But all the time I've been on the board with you, you always wanted retail businesses, so I didn't know if you had switched to service businesses, that's all.
I don't see what the difference is. What are the, what are the financial benefits of a service-oriented business?
There aren't any, that's the point.
Okay.
I might add.
But a suntanning place might sell tanning lotions and stuff, so there is a sales tax there with a suntanning place. I mean.
Okay. All right. I just think, I'm looking for clarity, and I don't think this is a clear statement, that's all. So I'm backing you up, Jeff. You may not take it that way, but I'm trying to help you.
Well, this was added at the last meeting, and we're trying to add what we were told at the last meeting.
It doesn't read right, that's all I'm saying. It's not clear enough, that's all.
So Jeff, you clear, you okay with the way it's written right now?
I'm fine with it, yes.
Okay. This will be on the consent agenda. All right, moving forward to the March 17th, 2016 special board meeting. Any additions, corrections?
It's a good novel.
These are the minutes I like.
You want to hire a court reporter? I had to laugh about that, too, but I mean, it's verbatim.
Yeah. I'm like, oh, I talk like that.
Okay, is everything, everybody okay with the 17th? All right, that'll be a show on the consent agenda. And for the consideration of the April 5th, 2016 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, any corrections, clarifications? Nothing? Okay, well, that'll be on the consent agenda. And consideration of the April 5th, 2016 Village Board Meeting Minutes, any corrections, edits? Okay, to put on the consent agenda. Thank you. Now we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing to discuss and consider ordinance granting a variation to Chapter 15.50 to allow a residential fence in an exterior side yard for the property located at 152 Park Avenue. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. It indicated this is a fence variation request. A petitioner is seeking to install a fence in the exterior side yard for their property. Property is located at 152 Park Avenue, which is at the intersection of Frankie Avenue and Park Avenue near the downtown area. What the petitioner, or, this slide here indicates what is the permissible fencible area for the subject property and adjacent properties. The dashed line for the property that's on the corner is a triangular shaped lot, which has, for a fence requirement, we don't allow, the village does not permit fences from their front yard or an exterior side yard of putting a street. So it has to be set back at the building setback line, which is about 30 feet from the right of way. So the triangle you can see here indicates the age of the property, when the property was created and the zoning ordinance was drafted, that there's a very small area of the property that can actually have a fence installed.
Brian, what are those two little buildings there on the, on the lot line, on the subject property?
Chicken coop.
There's a shed at this location.
Are you serious?
No.
I just want to drive by. It has to look like a shed.
Is it not two? I know I have glasses, probably need better ones, but.
I have some pictures later in the slide. I might be able to see what it is exactly.
Okay, thanks.
Want to look at that?
No, no, it's.
But as you can see from this aerial photograph, the permissible fence area would be aligned in this portion. So the area that they could legally provide a fence in their yard would essentially be restricted to a smaller area behind the back of the house. The adjacent property is a through lot, which has frontage on both Park Avenue and Frankie Avenue. Their fence would be allowed to go, since it's a rear yard, up to the property line in this location. They have a salt fence at that location. The petitioner is proposing to install a fence on their property, basically in the area that's permitted, but then also up to the property line that's along Frankie Avenue, that would create an enclosed yard for their use. Presently, there's landscape buffer, or landscape screen that's existing there and a split rail fence as well, and some other accessory structures in that area. But it would create a usable area for the property owners to utilize in their rear yard. These are some pictures that are, show the area in question. There's a shed, as you can see from the picture. There is also a split rail fence that connects to the existing chain link fence in the adjacent property. Petitioner is proposing to install a five-foot wood fence along the rear property line and also along their driveway to create a usable area that they can use in the backyard and control access to the property. Staff reviewed other properties within the area along Frankie Avenue. Due to the unique nature of the area, there are other properties that are along Frankie Avenue that front onto Burton Avenue or Park Avenue that have fences that go back to the rear property line along Frankie Avenue. So the request would be consistent with existing fences that are in that area presently. Therefore, staff is recommending, the Committee of the Whole recommend approval of the following motion to grant a variation to install a five-foot fence in the exterior side yard for the property located at 152 Park Avenue. Petitioner is present here as well, that they can provide additional information on the request.
I think this is a, this is a good example of why we have variances, that we need to allow this. I know it's been an issue in the past in terms of fences and these corner lots that have problems in terms of the amount of space they can fence in. And then I think this is just a perfect example of why we would want to allow a variance in this instance.
I agree 100% that I think this is exactly why we have this, because you have unique properties. And with that, you have to be able to adjust accordingly.
Any other comments?
I'm not a big fan of the fence all the way to the corner. So I'm just curious, if you had the fence start at the front of the house and go to the side lot line, and you eliminate that little triangle that's in the front, how big of a triangle is that, Brian?
That's in the front, as far as.
So if you took the, if you'd started the fence right at the corner of the house and ran it to the backyard line, which is where the petitioner is asking it to go, he eliminates then a small triangle in the front, or at least from the picture, it looks like it's a relatively small triangle. And the biggest part of his lot is obviously the remainder. So I'm just curious how big of a space that is, because while I would agree with my fellow trustees, a fence going out as far as it is beyond the house is going to look way different. And it is going to look like an eyesore. So I'm just curious if, you know, a happy median is just to run the fence from the front of the house to the back and eliminate that triangle, that's all.
The petitioner can respond to that, as far as their use. It's probably about a 20 or 30, if you're looking at the vehicles that are parked in the driveway, there are probably a 30-foot distance that would extend to the west, would be that triangular piece that would extend out. So probably a couple hundred square feet area would be not fenced in from that standpoint.
Could you go back to the picture that showed the driveway and the elevation of the property? I don't think that's something that you would even notice, though, because it's at a different elevation in terms of coming out along the driveway, then it would extend up and then back along Frankie.
So that raises a question, where would the fence go? Would it go in the driveway elevation, or would it be up on the grassy area in front of those bushes?
The bushes currently are installed along the property line. So there's a slope down from the right of way to the property. As you can see with the split rail fence, it kind of slopes down to the base of that fence. That would be installed on the property line. So from the view of the street with the landscaping, if that were to remain, that would screen the fence from a standpoint of its view from the roadway.
So to the best of your knowledge, that the greenery that's there is not going down?
Correct. The petitioner can respond to that as well.
Is that the case?
Could you come up to the microphone? We should really swear, man. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Itzel Quiros is my wife, and the address is 152 Park Avenue.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, I have to swear you in. So do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Rick, did you want to address the petitioner?
So I was just mentioning that from the front of the house to the back, where you want to put the fence along the line over there, to me, it would just look better. And then I was asking, is any of the greenery going to go down, since the, the greenery appears on, to be on your property line? Is that, is the hedges, they're going to be taken down and put a fence up instead?
Yes.
So then it will be.
Yes. The bushes, the project that we think about, me and my wife, is cut the bushes and put the fence right in there. I don't know exactly what's my property B. It's exactly right in the bushes, or like a couple feet inside or outside. So that's why I came to you guys, to get the right metric, so I can, for the permission, I can do the fence.
In the past, a couple, I mean, I remember one fence that we allowed on decker, where we actually had the petitioner put ever, not evergreens, but some shrubs in front of it, because of the fact that it just is a long, you know, long strand of wood, and it's a little bit of an eyesore. So as I look at this, I mean, the questions I had were, is the fence going to be in the front, in the back? If it's running all the way up to the corner over here and you're taking those bushes down, that will look a little bit less than desirable. And that's why I asked a simple question about, could you just take the fence from the corner of your garage and take it and not have this, this triangular piece in the front, part of it? I don't know. That's just my thought, but others may think differently.
Does anybody else have any comments with regards to the way it's presented or what Rick is?
I agree with kind of Rick in the sense with regards to, it would be a different look. I just made the assumption that the bushes were staying, so that was wrong on my part. But I do think that that, that can present a totally different look if you're coming all the way out to the property line there with a five-foot fence. You know, to not have any shrubbery or something there. To me, the shrubbery just kind of burned it a little bit. But you don't want that shrubbery, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
This is a, the front of the house faces, it's with the smaller sidewalk, right? Because technically, that's the back side of the house.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So in essence, it's going out to the back part of the house. That's how, when I drove by there, that's how I, how I thought it was going to be.
Correct. The nature of a corner lot, corner lots generally are very difficult from a buildable area or zoning area. And this lot, due to the angle that the two streets intersect, it's not a right angle. So you don't still have four property lines, you know, that the property has, like a typical corner lot might, would have the two street frontages, and it would still would have an interior side yard and a rear yard as well. This, the unique character of this property, it only has three lot lines. It has two that front the street, and then one that's an interior side yard of the property to the east. So it's more restricted as far as what they can do by right on the property from a zoning standpoint, what they can build, but then also where they can put a fence. It does operate like a rear yard, but by code, technically, it is an exterior yard towards the street.
Is the right of way for the Frankie, Frankie Street, is that like at the bottom of the hill or on top of the hill? Do we know exactly where that right of way is for the street?
From the areas that I have of the property, it's basically where the trees are installed now. So it's at the bottom of the hill. It's, there's a slope that goes down towards the yard. So where the, if you can see in the exhibit there, where the, the split rail fence is, that is on the property line. And that's down from the grade at the street level. So it does slope down into the yard.
So it would be then down about a foot and a half or two feet below the street level to begin with?
Correct.
And then the shrubbery would be behind it, but they were planning on cutting down the shrubbery?
Yeah, the shrubbery is also on the property line. So in order to solve the fence, they might, it would impact the shrubbery that's there.
I don't have a problem with the way it's currently being presented in terms of, it's basically a backyard, is what we're looking at, wanting to fence in. It just happens to abut Frankie Avenue in the front, would be on Park Avenue.
Yeah, I just think it should be pointed out. I don't have a problem with the petition. I think it's fine. But it should be noted, if you drive down Three Oaks, you look at fences the whole way down the street. So I don't really see this being an issue in its current location.
Dave Kim, anything?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Any other public?
No problem.
No, public.
Oh, and a public hearing?
No, any other.
Oh, is there anybody, I'm sorry. I thought, recognize these folks from Fox Trails, so I guess I assumed wrong. But did you have any comments about the fence, a petitioner? Did you have a comment about the fence?
Yeah, I have a question.
Could you, could you come up to the microphone, please?
I'm Karen Hook, and I live on Frankie Avenue, which is the lot that abuts is. And I only have a problem because there is a chain link fence there on the side, and I don't know why they don't put another chain link fence behind there. It would be more desirable to me than that. And I didn't realize they were taking out the bushes. I thought the bushes were staying and it would hide the fence. Because I'm wondering if that fence, if it's going to, how far up against Frankie it's going to be, because I don't know if it's going to block my view to back out of my driveway.
Brian?
No, I don't think it would have any, you live on, oh, you live on Frankie, so your house isn't on this map, then?
Probably not.
This one here is pretty far away.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yep. So that shouldn't have any variation.
I don't know, from the air. There you are.
Right.
There's a, size, so right now, the landscaping that's at the corner of the property would be basically what you would see if you're looking down Frankie, so you would still have a.
Yeah, I can still see.
Correct. You would still have a significant sightline.
Yeah. Looking from the air. But is there any way they can keep the bushes?
We can ask the petitioner. Could you come up to the microphone again, please?
No, not, not in our plans to keep the bushes. I don't really want it. I, I consider to put different bushes, small, but not, for me, is the, the bushes is what the, the mark, what my property is, you know, is the line of my property and the city property. So I'd just rather to have a fence, because I got kids that we usually get playing. I got scared because I'm in the middle of the two streets, you know? They like to play with the ball, and they kick the ball, they go over the road, and then, you know, something can happen to one of my kids. But it's more, for me, more security if I have just the fence. I might keep some bushes or put a new ones, but not all of them. Like a straight line, like the way it is, no.
So you would, you are willing to dress it up a little bit with a few bushes?
Yeah.
Okay. Would that be okay with you if he, it's not going to put a hedge of bushes. He's going to put sporadic bushes around there. Is that, would that satisfy your needs? Could you come up to the microphone?
I'm just worried about the five-foot height for wood. I mean, I don't know why they can't put the chain link fence in.
Chain link even allowed in the village anymore?
It's a, it's a conditional use, I believe.
Yeah, it's a special use.
That was a, that would be grandfathered in. It's up to the homeowner to decide what type of fence they want to put in. And I believe that the bushes, from what I recall seeing, they're higher than the five feet.
Yes.
So in essence, the five-foot fence would be lower than the current conditions that are there right now.
But the bushes you can see through.
Yeah. But he's, 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 he's ready to give some bushes, but not all the bushes. Would that be okay with you?
I guess it's going to have to be if the village approves it. And I just want to make sure that that section of lawn, that abuts Frankie, is still mowed by them.
I believe, do you have any intention of not mowing that anymore? You'll continue to maintain the lawn?
Yeah. Excuse, yes, I will. I will take care of that. And not because I have the fence, I'm not going to just forget about it, no. I just like to do it the same way. I want to do it from now on, because I'm recently moved.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I talked to Brian, assuming you're going to, the plan is survey and everything with the fencing company, well.
Yeah, but this would be, I need a recommendation to the village board from the Committee of the Whole.
You have a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole.
Do we close the meeting first, consent or not?
I will do it when we're done.
All right.
Yeah, is this something that you would like to, can we put this on the consent agenda, forthcoming consent agenda?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Now moving to a discussion regarding the Metro Train Station.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a briefing and some handouts for the village trustees to go along with my presentation.
Thanks, Chris.
I wanted to first take the opportunity to brief the public in the committee of the whole regarding the status of the train station proposed project that Kerry's been working on for the past 18, 24 months. There's a couple slides in front of you. It indicates that through truly a federal grant of $2 million that's been received by Metro, there are plans of the village to consider a enhancement to the warming shelter layout that we have by adding a fully enclosed, four-sided train station facility on the inbound side of the tracks along the Route 14 right-of-way owned by IDOT. The village, over the course of the last year, completed a conceptual design process to see if a facility would fit in the allowed land adjacent to the tracks on the inbound side. And we believe that it would. While it will be more of a narrow building than what many may see in other communities, it would certainly be a four-sided building and provide weather protection for residents and commuters that are using the facilities to head to Chicago in the morning. The facility as proposed, and you see some schematic concepts in front of you, would include an inside area to stand during all seasons of the year, as well as it would move the ticket agent facility from the current building that exists to the inbound side of the tracks, which was a request of both the Union Pacific and the Metro Railroad to maintain that office for that ticket service for our citizens as well as commuters. As part of the proposed concept, the existing building would be demolished and eliminated. The building concept would also include a designed-to-match warming shelter that's not four-sided as this indicates down the tracks towards, more towards Crystal Lake. That has been a project that we now, just by way of update, have completed a bidding process to select an architect and potentially at your next board meeting, there's a contract to consider for awarding the work. The village has been in discussion negotiations with Metro throughout this process. And separate from the $2 million grant, which funds potentially 75% or so of construction costs, the, the other elements to this are what the village cost might be, as well as any other requests of the railroad and any other agencies. First, talking about the village, in our budget that was passed at the last village board meeting, we've tentatively allocated $1 million of what we have in our commuter parking fund, received revenues, revenue sharing agreements with the railroad for some of the parking that commuters pay for, and we've saved a balance. And the board, through the budget process, has allocated that $1 million to this effort to match with the $2 million from Metro. A couple key questions before I talk about a railroad issue. At this point, we expect the construction costs to be in the $2 to $2.5 million range. Obviously, that's dependent on design and our requests through that process. And that is a budget that we've talked about conceptually with Metro. So that's an important, you know, number to note. Obviously, design and construction, design and architectural services are above and beyond that. So at our next meeting, potentially depending upon your discussion tonight, you'll receive that contract request, and it's in the ballpark of $250,000 for designing this work. That's an agreed-upon element with Metro of this project. Separately, there's been some discussion, as the trustees are aware and the mayor's aware, with the Union Pacific Railroad. And I passed out a letter from the railroad that memorializes their position as of last Friday. The railroad owns the land underneath the tracks, and we've worked with them to talk about some minimal land acquisition that would have to occur. There's some swap-outs of square footage from the current side of the tracks where the building is to where the new site would be and what's needed. So there's a couple hundred square feet of land that we need from them to complete the work, and they're cooperative with that process with some details yet to be determined, which are outlined in your letter. And separately, as has been reported, the railroad requested that a crossing, a pedestrian crossing that's not far from where the current building is, that exists mid, mid-station area. That crossing has been in existence for many years, and the railroad asked us to take a look at that for safety. And as we've reported to you through prior meetings, the past three years, data shows there's been about 15 near misses in the last three years at that, well, pedestrian crossing, as reported by the engineer that drives the locomotive back to dispatch. And so there is, and there does appear to be a business case for some pedestrian enhancements. And that's separate and distinct from the train station project and has to occur regardless of what we do with the station facilities. So we've received this letter, and it indicates in writing from UP that they're requiring this. Conceptually, staff agrees with, with this. We are in the process of determining, you know, final budgeting for this kind of crossing gate solution. Essentially, either side of the pedestrian crossing would have a gate that would come down that signaledized, that would tie to the train passing, and it would close when the station, the train is near the station, and it will help to keep people off the tracks. That cost is about a half a million dollars. It would be designed and built by Union Pacific forces themselves by their request. That budget still has to be evaluated as to, you know, it's the level of accuracy, but it's a, it's a budget figure. I immediately, when I was requested of this earlier in the month, I asked Metro executives to look at the concept of funding that as another share of their part of the project. I received a email back on Friday from Metro stating that there's discussion with executive director, CEO, Don Orsino regarding Kerry's request for funding assistance from, for the proposed pedestrian crossing. They informed, Metro was informed that funding's not available for Metro for this. Metro's received a hold status from the state of Illinois on approximately $400 million in other project funding due to the financial condition of the state of Illinois and the budget impasse in Springfield. In addition, positive train control improvements that are being required by federal agencies cost Metro about $350 million of unfunded capital improvements. These are two important factors as to why Metro cannot assist the village with funding this improvement. Also, that was the answer back on that piece. What I say to that is, another example of challenges we're having with the state, you know, impasse, and we just need to understand that. I believe that there are other opportunities for us to pursue with respect to seeking outside funding. There's a couple United States Transportation Agency bills we can work on, but Metro's a no. And as it relates to the overall project budget, this may or may not need to be a piece of what we consider to be our $1 million. I would like to assume that most of it is. I think through value engineering on the station project, there may be some savings where certainly if you decide to proceed, we'll give our architect firm, you know, the direction of this expense. I'll continue to pursue outside funding opportunities like we always do, and, you know, we'll move forward. So I, I think it's just an answer that we're waiting on. It's important to report. You know, I'd like to pursue the project and continue the path that we've committed to, and I wanted to take any questions or feedback. The bottom line, I think that the answer for Metro shows also is that there just aren't pots of money here anymore for station projects like there were in the, you know, before the recession. Every agency in the state that's public is having challenges in, in budgeting and receiving funding sources from outside agencies. So, you know, I view that to be also a statement regarding our $2 million in federal money. I believe we're privileged to have that resource. It's difficult to get, you know, beyond it. We'll certainly work every way we can to enhance, you know, public improvements in Kerry. Want to take your feedback and answer any questions that you have tonight on the project.
Well, thanks, Chris. I appreciate you for bringing this to us tonight because I think I was the one that was kind of pushing for this. I felt that after two trustees had met with the architects and interviewed the architects, I thought we needed to have a discussion, and I wasn't sure why we weren't having a discussion in terms of why two trustees would meet with the architects and then walk out and have second opinions and taking a step back and thinking, maybe we ought to rethink this project. So that's the reason why I wanted to have this discussion tonight and kind of talk about, is this really the path that we want to take in terms of tearing down the station, completely eliminating a proper station that we have and going to a quasi-station with a ticket booth and a closet, and then a warming shelter, when we have a $2 million grant given to us from the federal government that we can upgrade the current station that we have, and perhaps with some facade improvements, make it look like the station that we have sitting here, and then put in the two warming shelters on the other side to match what that would look like and keep what we currently have. And then down the line, perhaps if something would come up or something changes, then look to putting in a proper station. To me, I don't feel we have the width. I feel that coming around Route 14 there, you're going to be coming up and bam, you're going to be hitting that station, not hitting it literally, but boom, it's going to be in your face. It's going to be like a narrow canyon going down Route 14 there. And I just think that we ought to take the $2 million grant and say, oh geez, wow, $2 million we have to spend on the current station and upgrade things and move forward to that. I think we opened up a can of worms, and now we see this issue with the crossing, the grade crossing farther up that we're going to have to come up with money for. I just think that we ought to maybe take a step back and say, okay, let's, let's see some images of what the station could look like with the improvements, with the $2 million. You know, we, we never seem to see what the other options would be, and we have that with the gravel pit, you know, we got that big bells and whistles with the gravel pit, but we never saw what the other options might be. Let's see what the train station could look like with the $2 million and the two warming shelters, and then move forward with it that way. I don't think that this really solves the issues that we have in terms of what's going on downtown now with the congestion, and then also the, so we have the congestion and then we have the grade crossing down there. This still doesn't eliminate people crossing the grade downtown. I mean, it still is going to be there. People park on that side, they cross the tracks to get to the station. So it doesn't solve that problem. So that's, that's pretty much what I'm, I'm saying is, let's take a step back and say, wait a minute, do we really want to go ahead and do this?
Dave, did you?
Yeah, so trustee Kraus, he, I wrote that speech that he just gave, and I just, oh, well, maybe not exactly, but I've been very supportive of the project right from the start about needing to improve our image downtown and up, right up until the, the architect selection process, which administrator Clark was correct. We had consensus to move forward up to that point, and I absolutely, I appreciate it. What I wanted to tell you is that from that discussion, what I came away from and with some, some concerted thought was, why do we need to do anything and spend even one more dollar? What we learned from the money that we expended studying for the architecture firms sending out for bids, what we learned about the process with Metro, Union Pacific, the state of Illinois, the right-of-way, the number of hoops and things that we'll jump through are things that are, it's only going to be valuable to us. But what is the necessity of us to do this, to take and put something which is not exactly the way that we want it? What is the need for us to do that, putting something up not exactly the way we want it right now? And I came up with the opinion from all those discussions that there is nothing. There's nothing to stop us right now, especially with, some of our plans were to remove the old station and turn that spot along the, the tracks into a community festival site, vendor program. And we understood from our discussions that that's not going to be allowed. It's not favored by the railroad or Union Pacific. There's still issues there, and then it also wasn't conducive to the type of white topping to make it into that community spot. So that kind of nixes that. The other thing is, if I don't have to spend the money and do this, then the things that we needed on the other side is places for people to stay, warming shelters, we need someplace for people to get out of the rain. Yes, it's kind of dumb that our train station is on the wrong side of the tracks, but that's where it is, and without a major relocation of the road, I don't think we're going to find a spot. I am not, absolutely not, after seeing the design of a 16-foot structure, and now you build walls in there, which turns it into a 14-foot narrow building and saying that that is going to be an improvement. So that's what came out of the, the architecture meetings. And again, like Jeff, I, I thought we went there so that we could then come back and sit down and talk with the rest of the trustees about what we thought about it. The firms were good, they gave great presentations. But having seen all of that and knowing, you know, what we have, the, the cost-to-benefit ratio is not there, and I recommend my, my fellow trustees that we do not move ahead, that we take the $2 million from Metro, we allow them to fix up our station. Whether or not we have the architectural design, if it means, you know, that they put a coating of paint on there and some new siding and fix it up, that's, that's fine with me, and give us some nice new shelters on there to keep our residents out of the rain and cold. And I absolutely answer any questions that you have. We have the presentation books if you haven't had a chance to look at them.
Any other comments?
I'm just sort of wondering, where do you envision the perfect spot for this to be? Because I just don't see, you're talking about a narrow building, but where else could it go?
With what?
And I'm not, I'm not picking.
No, 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 no. We talked about it during the comprehensive plan, you know, when the residents were given feedback. And one of the things that we talked about was straightening out that curve there on 14, which would help us to facilitate it. Obviously, there was talk about moving it down towards the west side of town. I understand, you know, that's not, probably not possible. But my point is, why do I have to move it anywhere? Why do I have to spend any money if, you know, I'm going to have what my residents need, and that is a place to buy tickets, a place to get out of the elements, and I don't have to spend any money now? You know, why, why would I if I, you know, if I didn't have to? So that's, that's it, Jim.
Do we know the width of the Fox River Grove?
Yeah.
Station?
Yeah, it's, I believe it's 22 or 24 feet wide. It's narrower station because they've got different geometry there in terms of what fits. So it's a little bit narrower, but it's absolutely doable.
Well, the, the building is 22 square, 22 feet wide, correct?
I don't know.
Because they also have that additional space for the pole-in, you know, so they, their space up there is considerably larger. They have a drive-through where they can drop off people, there might, I think it's a drop-off, and then they have the station. So the station is 22 feet plus another, I don't know, 16, 20 feet for the drop-off. So I mean, that's a considerably wider piece of property than what we're talking about here in downtown Kerry along Route 14. And in terms of a possible space in the future, I mean, I've talked about Maplewood in the past. You know, I said that would be a possible site, you know, and then it was said that, well, no, they don't have any interest in moving the station up to the Maplewood property on the east side of the property. But I was talking about putting it on the west side of the property with an underpass, you know, under the tracks to get either side, like the station up in Pingree. So I mean, that would be one possible situation where we could move the station. Other sites would be just down a little bit farther where the bank is. I mean, there, you know, that, that site has been up, you know, it used to be a restaurant. It's changed places. It used to be a factory back in there, too. So I mean, that, that would be something if that ever came up for sale. There are other possible sites that aren't quite just this narrow, this just seems to be like, okay, we gotta do something, so we're going to do something. Let's, let's grab the money and then spend another $2 million on top of that, you know, to put in a station, just to say we're putting up a new station.
Any other questions?
How many people can these warming shelters hold, roughly?
I don't know, we have, our typical commuter is about 1,000 riders a day, and it's not like they're going to, you know, they're only in there for a matter of minutes and then they're gone.
I believe it would be the capacity for a morning commute.
Okay.
And remember, there's another one further west on the tracks as well. And through the, I sat in the meeting with, the, one of the original meetings with Metro, and they had indicated that they will not be spending a lot of money on our existing station. If they did anything, it would be paint, replace a couple of the windows. They were not going to make a substantial investment in the current shelter, or the current building the way it is, that there, the money that they were going to spend was going to be on the warming shelters, moving it to the other side.
My other question is, is if we got rid of the old structure, we did talk about having that, it was like a festival area for people, so that's no longer an option?
I would say to that, that we've now had discussion about a pedestrian crossing solution by UP. We've talked about a fence being added during the project to help make the flow safer. We now understand from a common sense perspective what they've the flow safer. We now understand from a common sense perspective what they've asked about from an event management standpoint and security. I don't think that we have real issues, but we're going to respect what UP said and Metro and continue to talk with them when we have special events, either in this general area or, you know, along the main thoroughfare of the downtown. I don't think we have an issue.
I, I just wanted to mention one more thing. Really, the only comments I have on this is, is the pedestrian crossing. And I brought this up in the past with Chris. I've had several residents that have expressed a desire for some sort of over or underage so that they don't have to cross the tracks because this does not solve that problem. And for a half million dollars, I'm just thinking, can't we build something that would go over the tracks to, and eliminate the crossing altogether? And then there's no, I like to call them near hits.
Yeah.
A near miss is actually a hit. But yeah, then there's no problems with that.
Two comments, and I'll get to the, the undercrossing component in a minute. As it relates to the current pedestrian crossing, I mean, obviously, it's still across the tracks, right? I mean, and the gates are designed to be the way to help keep people safe by making sure that the system itself is not allowing access, which now, in theory, people can cross and might miss something if trains are coming back and forth. As it relates to under or over the railroad solutions, there are some, and there's a case in Lake Forest presently. Most of the time, if there is the right geography to install it, and I'm not certain there is here based on what we've heard from Metro and UP, but a couple million dollar projects. And there are some that have even more use than ours. I think the west side of Lake Forest is a good example. It, you know, anything's possible, just getting it funded, and it's becoming increasingly challenging. And in this case, you see UP basically saying, here's what we demand, and you got to pay for it. And the reality is that we need to be aware of, if we have further issues of safety, I mean, the crossing gates can disappear as well, and the crossing can be closed unilaterally. So we need to understand that. But I, I would suggest that those that have looked at, including our Poliwork staff, is concerned about how that would space out and what it would cost, and that's why it's not been pursued in the past years.
Jim, you're also, we were talking about, or maybe you weren't, about the pedestrian crossing further down towards the west.
Well, I just think there needs to be a solution so that people don't race the train, because that's what's happening right now.
And I, I believe from our discussions and the letter from UP is they were addressing the mid-track.
Right.
Crossing, not the one at 14 and Main.
Right.
Is, the issue was the mid-track one, which will, will have to be addressed, no matter what, whether we go forward with a warming shelter and a bucket of paint, or whether we, you know, build a $2 million Taj Mahal down there. We can't have people crossing over there. So I agree, if what we need to do is, you know, put something over, then that's something absolutely we've got to pursue.
I would just suggest that one of the, one of the concerns that we've had over time has been that that building that exists today is on the wrong side for inbound commuting. And in the winter, when people use it to stay out of the weather, as you understand, they'll try to stay as long in the shelter as they can, and then they're crossing the tracks to get to the right side to go downtown, you know, with not a lot of time. So, correct. I mean, the parking is never going to be able to be on the Route 14 side of the tracks in this general area. But when you put the building on the proper side of the tracks to go down to Chicago or towards Chicago, you're, you're avoiding some of these last-second crossings that we now have. So that was one of the reasons from the very beginning, we tried to find a way, if it fit, to put a building on the inbound side of the tracks. And, you know, certainly, it's up to the board what, what you want to do. I will say this is Metro's building, including the one presently. It's not our building. It's their money. And based on past legislation, this board, I mean, we pursued the inbound side based on your direction. So, you know, I'd like to know tonight how to proceed because we've got a contract to bring to you that we worked on for about four months, and it's designed to come to you at the next board meeting, where you also have some other business on it. So I think we should be clear on how we're moving forward, and if it's, you know, something you want to talk about, I'd like to understand further tonight what you want, what you want to do.
Sure. As, as Metro brought it to us, and they understood that our issue was that our residents had to sit on the wrong side of the tracks and that they were crossing. And that was the reason that Metro brought to us the idea of the three warming shelters, so that they would be available for our residents to then not have to do that quick scurry across during the winter. And placing them along the tracks, spacing them out, will give us enough, you know, places for the people to stand and get in out of the elements without having to actually move the existing building. And so that's, that's, of course, I'm looking forward to us doing. It's something that we can do right now. It will make an immediate impact on our residents. It will meet the desire of the railroad as well as the village board to have places for people to stand out of the element, and it will save our taxpayers money. And I'm asking the board to consider that as the course of action to follow. But not to throw the baby out with the bathwater. The information that we gained was very valuable, and it will be able to be used in the future with other projects.
All right, thank you. Let's open it up to Kim. Do you have any comments?
The warming shelters that you talk about?
Yeah.
Is that just something you, excuse me, I don't take the train to work, so is it just a building that you walk into and-
It's not four-sided. It's open with heaters.
Okay. I wanted to know.
Three-sided.
Rick, any questions?
Wouldn't we have any control over that, though, in terms of what we would like to see? I mean, there's $2 million. $2 million, to me, seems like an awful lot of money for a three-sided, you know, two warming shelters and a bucket of paint.
That's not what I said.
And some new windows.
That's not what I said. I can say that there are enhancements from what you have today. They're not four-sided. They're not enclosed. That's the difference. There's, there's a couple of them down the tracks that was part of the concept. And then there was, you know, a million or so to refurb the existing building where it stands. So-
You have to remember, this is all outside funding. This is federal funding that comes in, and it's also a user fee for the Metro commuters. So they are the ones who are paying for it. It's their benefit. And the commuters that I've talked to are all in favor of having some decent structure on the inbound side.
Same. Everyone I've talked to seems to like this video.
Trustee, do you have any questions?
No questions, just some comments. I, I think, you know, it's, you have to look at this realistically, and I agree, it would be fantastic if we could straighten out the Route 14 bend.
Yeah.
Whether we're putting a, a station up here or not, that's a terrible turn. But that's not going to happen. That's a pipe dream. That, that won't happen for decades if it ever happens. So you, you can't put that into the equation, Jeff, in my, in my opinion. I think you're looking-
I don't think I put that out there.
Or Jeff slash Dave. In my opinion, you're looking at a three to three and a half million dollar project of which two-thirds of it you're getting funded by. So I, I can't for the life of me look at it any other way than a very positive situation for the taxpayers of Cary. We're, yes, we are spending money to make some major improvements, but we're not spending three and a half million, three to three and a half million to do so. So I think to be fiscally responsible, and if we have fiduciary responsibility to our citizens to pass that up and give them the kind of improvements that this would bring, I think is not the right move. The only thing I'm concerned about a little bit, Chris, that I heard you saying, Kim actually asked to follow up, and I'm not sure I got an answer I'm perfectly comfortable with, and that is the removal of the existing building. I, I think I would still be in favor of putting up the new station, but I would like to know that the existing building is down. Everything that Eric showed us in terms of a festival area, I think hinges upon that area being freed up and-
Yeah, I don't see any reason the building doesn't come down at all. I mean, this, as you understand, the negotiations with the different agencies has gone on over 12 months. So there's been different viewpoints as things have come to pass. And, you know, getting that space, getting that out of the way is a huge piece of this. And the reuse can be blended into your downtown planning. You've received a plan from Hitchcock Design Group on your downtown planning with some thematic aspects that can help this design as well as other designs in the downtown using this space. I think getting the, getting the obsolete building out of the way helps. And I don't think you're going to be limited.
I'm, I'm sorry. You made it. You used the word obsolete. How is the building obsolete? It's in use today. How is it obsolete?
It's on the wrong side of the tracks.
Okay. So it's been an obsolete building ever since it was built?
I mean, it's a matter of opinion, I guess, but it's on the wrong side of the tracks.
And, and it, and Rick, I'm, I'm going to take a phrase from your, a major improvement. So what is a major improvement that we'll be doing? Are you talking about the fact that it's moved over onto the, up on side of the track?
No.
Okay.
I'm talking about the fact that there's going to be three-plus million dollars being spent in our core business district for the people of Village of Cary. And it's my responsibility to vote appropriately for something like that, which is what I'm doing. I'm fully in support of this.
Okay. So the, the fact is that it's an obsolete building over on the other side, and every day of the year that people ride the train, they leave for work from an obsolete building. And you don't have to spend anything.
No, they don't. They do not. There are some that use it, but it's lightly used.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments from Trusty McCullpin? Did you have anything?
Sure. I would say that while I can understand that, again, we've talked about this quite a few times, that it's not necessarily the, the optimum solution in the sense we wish we had more property to work with. I think that we are tasked with saying, here's what we do have, and how do we bring this to our residents? And I don't know when this opportunity is going to come up again, that we're granted $2 million to improve upon something for our residents. I have talked to numerous commuters, and every one of them is very excited about the opportunity to have an actual building, not a warming shelter, somewhere that they can be in four-sided during adverse weather conditions, which we certainly have in this area. So while I understand that if we had a bigger piece of property, we'd be looking at this differently, we don't. So again, I feel that, I'm totally in support of this, and I feel that it's, it's being very prudent in using the dollars, the other million dollars. It's money that it's, it's not money that we're taking. We've already have the money allocated in our, in our parking fund, and we do have to use it for something in this realm. So I think that it's a, I think that it's a wise and prudent decision, too, to bring this to our residents.
Jim, did you have any final? Are you still in support of the project?
Yeah, I support it. I, I guess the only thing I wanted to add is, Trusty Chapman and Kraus, you know, you, you were talking about a vision for something else down the line, and, and I'm supportive of that. You know, I, I like the thinking, forward-thinking, but we don't have that. So without any type of plan for the future where we could have a location or better spot for it, I, I don't see any real negatives in going forward with this plan. You know, it's, it's an improvement. It's going to help legalize the commuters that use the train.
One other point I need to make, new information. I had been asked about this during the process by Metro, but as a matter of practice, every so often, Metro requires municipalities to audit their commuter parking funds. And I've been asked to have a Metro audit of our commuter parking funds. And that's to verify that parking receipts are received properly, they're dispensed by agreements, and they analyze your fund balance. And, I mean, I was told that. So, I mean, in a good way, we've been good stewards of the commuter dollars that are commuter dollars. And obviously, there could be other pavement improvements for parking lots, things like that we could consider, but it's not necessarily logical to keep a million dollars in a balance in a parking fund in the town of the size of Cary for too long. So I just want to point that out. We have the auditors coming for that exercise on May 4th.
So you're still, you're in support of it, Jim?
Yes.
Ellen, you're not in support of it anymore?
No, I wouldn't.
Dave's not. Kim, you are? And Jim, okay, we have some direction here. Thank you.
Mayor's slides.
Was there any other questions when the audits about, did you have a question? Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Well, actually, it's, it's here. I'd like to ask. So you wanted to tear down a historic building that we've had, and now people are going to have to cross the tracks here to buy tickets, and then cross back over the tracks to go toward Woodstock. And you're saying 15-year misses on that side, you're going to have a heck of a lot more now. There's already a warning bell inside that, that tells people, time to cross, time to go. If they don't go, you know, it happens everywhere. There's a lot of crazy people out there. If they want to ditch, that's up to them. I mean, they're going to be racing. And now you're going to put more lives in jeopardy by having more people crossing over and going back. And that is a historic landmark. Why don't you just take the roof off, raise it up, put on some dorvers or gables, make it fit in with downtown, make it look better? It's second of all. You're going to take this out, cars are going to come in, there's still the tracks parking, you're, they're going to have to walk, go through to the bank. There isn't much room for your festival, brand cars going through people by taking down a historic building. So what are you going to do? Put a, a medium in the, here that cuts out some area so that here's where cars can go, and this is where people can be for a small, little Cary festival? That doesn't make sense.
That's not, that's not the reason we're doing this.
And this, I think your tie-drap's a little bit off, but what you have, but I mean, hopefully, this won't block any view. They forgot where that is. But you're taking the charm of Cary and wanting to put this here, putting more lives at risk, more lives at risk.
I don't understand how you're, you're saying more lives at risk. We're reducing the liability because the commuters come, 90% of the commuters in the Village of Cary go east. We have a handful of people that go west.
At, at this point, and I've lived here 50, over 50-some odd years, I mean, that bell inside lets you know that you need to cross over. I mean, if anything, maybe you should put another crossing here instead of where they have to walk all the way down here and route. Maybe there could be another crossing here and more warmers. I mean, it's absolutely ridiculous to tear down a historic landmark for what, a 20 by 20 piece of land for what you think you're going to put a party in there. It's not going to fit anybody. Secondly, your warming, this little thing here, if you think this is going to warm 16 feet wide with interior walls and a, and a pay booth that's going to house 90% of your people going into the city, it's not. They're still going to be standing outside. Bad weather. I bring my umbrella. If you, you guys keep wanting to change Cary so badly and, and make it what? We got, I mean, you've got downtown Main Street, I mean, on First Avenue, Pedport coming in. I mean, you're just tearing up Cary. I mean, just fix the roof, put some beautiful gables on so it blends in with the rest of the street, the downtown charm, the twinkling lights. But no more, I mean, you're going to put more lives at risk. If you think you got them now, you got another 10% people. If you say it's 90 to 10 going to the city, now you got another 10% that are going to have trouble. Another 10%. And it's just not making sense when you got traffic coming through here, and now all your parking is over here.
Mm-hmm.
Put in a couple, another, another crossing.
Metro, I don't think you understood the original conversation. As Metro wants us to close that, they don't want to have any mid-
Don't tear it down then. Use it as a meeting hall. Use it as a, as something else, a coffee station. Put something else in there, but don't tear down part of Cary.
The, the train station was built in 1985.
Yes. Don't tear it down. If you're going to, if you're going to do anything, make one a ticketing and another ticketing over here or something, but you're, you're, it doesn't make sense to increase your risk of people getting hurt as well as increasing the risk of somebody getting hit by a car up here.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next discussion regarding Meyer material. Chris, Jake, you doing this? Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the village board and committee of the whole. Want to draw your attention to one key slide. At, at the last meeting, there was a request to look at a hybrid plan of the lake site near the Meyer material pit, which has been under discussion due to a proposed extension of the mining that has been brought forward by- of the mining that has been brought far forward by Meyer material. What I want to show you here is, the slide itself is the schematic we looked at at the last village board meeting, which we briefed as a park concept for future park use. And before I talk about the budget that you had asked me for, which I have, I wanted to indicate that the black line on the north end you see is the smaller lake concept, and we have a different picture of that in a minute, but it's easier to explain it on one slide. In essence, our park planner said that with discussion with Meyer, that that black line would be the end of the, the lake. And we've looked at that from a staff standpoint, if you proceed with, you know, a mining agreement in some fashion, which has not been determined yet. You asked us to look at some of the impacts to the adjacent neighbors and the site itself, and I have a couple of comments. The smaller lake, if that is what occurs, one of the challenges with it is that some of the properties on, I would say, the north end of Fox Trails that back up to the berm, they won't have water behind their properties. And not all, but many have said that that is an important element that they request. One of staff concerns with the smaller lake was that there would be less water on that end based on the mining projections that we've received, and it would create more of a green space or a unimproved, a natural area space behind more of the properties, and we were concerned that you might get, some of the neighbors that back up against it might have some concerns about that. But this is an example. We can show the other slide, the full design of the, of the smaller lake, but I wanted to indicate a couple of budget items while we're pulling that slide up for you. You asked what the original schematic would cost in a ballpark budget, and obviously, as you understand, there hasn't been an agreement yet on the extent of the mining, but the park plan that had been looked at that was passive in nature and low impact, it's about an eight to eight and a half million dollar project. There may be some offsetting trail costs that would be backed off of that, that would become the responsibility of Meyer material, depending upon the final agreement with Meyer, if there is one. So that gives you a ballpark budget. It does not, within that eight to eight and a half million dollar budget, include the full programming of a beach facility. We are, as was the direction of the village board, we are preserving future opportunities if there is a lake amenity that is used for a passive park. There is potentially some beach access on the north end, and what could be done now, if that is part of the continued goal, is to shelve the lake properly from a depth, a depth standpoint, and just complete the grading around the north end in such a way that would preserve that right in the future. It doesn't mean the village would do that. It would mean it'd be an option down the road. It certainly would require a lot of resident input, engagement with other taxing bodies. Clearly, the village itself is probably not in a great position to source these, a park activity to its, its own self solely. But that gives you some perspective on the lake and the park site. This is the designed smaller lake, and it's what you asked us for, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. As the public is aware, this prior week, Meyer Material asked for some additional time to respond to some of the requests of the village for information, and that's undergoing now. It's ongoing now. And at this time, I would expect voting consideration on May 3rd. We're waiting to hear back from Meyer later this week. I'll be sharing this information with the public and the media over the next couple of days to make sure the public is aware. At this time, I expect it, May 3rd before you. Again, this park concept is solely a concept. We've looked at if there is a future improvement, there are some annexation opportunities, de-annexation opportunities with our neighboring Algonquin. We've had some engagement with other taxing bodies. There may be some interest from other taxing bodies in participating in this. It's a, it's a major project. It's not designed to model the Crystal Lake facility we've talked about. It's designed to be a complement with different types of uses that would appeal to the neighboring residents and others, but that's part of the, the planning process. What I'll say, though, is that if there is the decision to extend the mining agreement, we now have detailed grades that haven't existed before for this site so that Meyer would be required to lay it out properly to allow future development. And that's important because if that, if an extension is provided, you want to have the site kept in such a way from a grading standpoint to allow future uses. You will always have the ability to decide those uses down the road. You'll need a significant amount of public input, but right now, from the standpoint of the responsibility and accountability for Meyer, these grades are really important, and it's an outgrowth of this work that was done. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Chris, the smaller lake, what time of, what kind of a timeframe are we talking about?
It was designed to be discussed with Meyer. I mean, it was the conceptual two-year design.
On top of an extension, you mean, two-year extension or within the reclamation period?
Yeah, I mean, the, the missing piece is, is them coming back and confirming that, and, but the fact is, yeah, in concept, it was designed to be, complete the mining activities in June 1 of 2018 instead of June 1 of 2019. And this is our concept for that. That's what you asked for.
And then a reclamation period after that?
Yeah, most likely. I, I believe that's part of the, the story that the board will have to determine, and Meyer's going to have to respond to. When you shorten the schedule, it has, you know, and there's expectations about how the site has to be left for either future use and/or just for its adjacency to the residential neighborhood. It's got to be left properly, and, and there's some time that's involved in needing to do that. So it's dependent upon if there's an extension. If there is an extension, you know, to what extent do we want to make a list of demands to have it built the way you want? So that's what we've been doing prior to you making a decision about a mining agreement extension.
Chris, can you cover, you mentioned that if you went with the smaller lake, there would be less water view for the residents of Fox Trails, can you point out where, how that would happen?
And then I'll do it on these homes here.
Okay, so the smaller, the smaller lake doesn't extend as far north, right? And so therefore, the property owners up in the northeast corner don't see as much of the, of the lake.
This area here, and this is non-water space, and we expect logical questions to be, so what's going to go on there? What uses are going to be there? Are there going to be, you know, things that are not water, like festivals or any kind of music that would be part of an event here? I'm just concerned that it would be, from the standpoint of these folks, not necessarily what we, we talked about up to now. And there certainly is, this is a concept, and, I'll just speak on it. It is a, it is a concept that involves geology and clarity about what we expect Meyer to leave this, you know, to be. And while we've gone through this discussion, we've learned that north end is, is quite important, and north end is in Cary now. It appears to be, if, if you plan to have some kind of park use down the road, it appears to be a logical location for some of that use. But we've tried to balance up-to-date the adjacency to the neighbors, which was the commitment the village has made a, a way along the process. So those are my answers.
Yeah, from my perspective, and I, I'm not one of the people that has a home back there, but if I've gone through this for all the years that they have up till this point, and I don't have water view, A, I'm not too happy, B, park use would tend to, tend to me to mean potential a lot of noise, where there could be a lot of people and bands and things along those lines. So I'm not in favor of that.
Can I make a comment?
Sure. Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Okay. I'm Ron Moore. I'm 5'8" at Abbeywood Drive. So I'm right where you're, where you're talking about. And there's a, in discussion with some of the neighbors, there's a couple of things. First of all, the amphitheater has to go, because that is going to generate noise, confusion. Noise carries over water, and plus, the west wind would bring more noise. And so you already have a theater in Lions Park that has minimal usage. Why would we, why would we put another one here? The other thing is, on Abbeywood Drive, we already have people parking, cutting through the lots to get over to the lake to do fishing, and, and in some cases, bikes going back and forth on the, on the Meyer property. So those are some of the objections I just wanted to bring out right now, that the, as far as the, the music festival, we will fight that right through the courts if we have to. That's, that's an absolute no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments about the update?
I may make one response. Certainly, those are valid comments from the neighborhood, and these concepts are laid out on, on a map, and future village boards will have to assess that. And regardless of what, if any, extension the village board determines in May, all this does is affect grading. It doesn't build any amenities today that match that plan. It's solely leaving the land, and so there is no, there's plenty of options or, or lack of options that can happen thereafter, and it would be done by likely, you know, years down the road with a lot of planning and input from the community and the residents. So I just want to make sure the neighbors understand that, that today.
All right. I do have one other. Can you give us a summary of what's the main difference? Because it's one year, a total project, one year more if we went with three years of excavation. Is that correct?
It depends on how you look at that. Today, the mining is, by the current agreement, to be done by June 1 of 2016, with restoration done by June 1 of 2018. The map in front of you is still highly conceptual, but it would end the mining on June 1 of 2018. It's not clear that the restoration would be done by June 1 of 2018. It, it results in a, a smaller lake due to the number of months to get to this place. And there are other proposals that are not now in discussion at four years. There is not a mining proposal now being discussed with Meyer that is four years long. That's been by board discussion and direction. There's discussion going on about July 1, 2019, which is a separate concept from this. So there's, you know, that, the, the original proposal was for four years of additional mining. I believe that we will hear answer this week that it can be done in three years to complete what they've asked for, and that was what we discussed at the last board meeting. The reality to this is that it's more than just drawing pictures on a piece of paper. You understand that there's significant vehicle and equipment and labor work that has to go on tied to the, the gravel mining operation, and we're analyzing that now, and that's what's caused the delay of a couple of weeks. So we're sure that whatever the board considers is as close to accurate as it can be, because no one has given us direction to ever want to have another extension of this. So we're building terms into what you're going to look at that will be much tighter than what we had in 2008, and that's by board direction.
So the, the difference, Chris, though, of one year would be if you went with the smaller lake is when it's one year less, and you're going to have incomplete grading, right? So you basically have a project that's not done if, if you limit it to two years. But if you go to three years, you have a bigger lake, and you have it properly graded. Is that the direction you're going now?
What I'm saying is, I was asked to bring a map back that is that. And I will say that I have still some unanswered concerns about how Meyer does that, and I still have some unanswered concerns about how Meyer does a three-year plan. And so those are what we're analyzing now before we bring you a staff recommendation that you'll then decide. I would explain that by resident feedback from a number of zoning hearings and village hearings, you know, the residents, rightfully so, that live adjacent, believe that less mining is better than more. And there's also been feedback about how is this going to be left at the end of the project? And so we're trying to meld those viewpoints together and bring you something that's rational that maximizes the public value, a lot of which will help the neighbors next door. Based on their own input, of course, they may not view it that way, but there have been some concessions on neighborhood amenities that some have asked us for that, you know, we hope to bring back to you, that will be created based on this discussion, so.
All right, thank you. Do we, do we have enough time to go through the Comcast right now?
We can do that under the administrator's report.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and do that. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.